Before we start the meeting tonight, we're going to have the pledge, going to be led by Councilman Gabe Nobby, and the prayer is going to be given by Brian Powell. And whether or not you participate in the invocation has no bearing on the business that you came here to do tonight. We invite all different denominations to come in and do the invocation. And if you'd like to do it, all you have to do is go in my office and tell Melissa I'm glad to sign you up. So with that, I'd like us all to stand. Gabe Nobby, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Brian, appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father God, I thank you for no day of life you blessed with, God, me up to and tight to get up and go to our jobs and tend to our responsibilities, Lord. We thank you for having to come together tonight as a community, to serve this community and make decisions, Lord, to serve the people of this community, Lord. I just pray that you'll be with our discussions, I pray that you'll be with our decisions, Lord, give us wisdom, give us a sense of what's best for this community and for your will, Lord. God be with those who are struggling with different things, God, and we've got different people in our city who are struggling with health concerns, God, I know of one in particular, I pray in Jesus' name to your healing hand be upon this individual, God, and bring him back to full health again very soon. Good Lord, thank you for these men and women and their service they offer to this community, bless them, bless their families who are waiting for them tonight, Lord, and just be glorified in all we say and do. We love you, thank you for this time, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
The call is a meeting order. First order of business, do I say everybody put their cell phones on the library or the off position? And the next item of business would be our roll call.
Councilwoman Rich, present.
Councilwoman Weber.
Here.
Councilwoman Shomel.
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Here.
Councilwoman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven council people are here, we're going to inform them and we can do business. I welcome all of you that are visiting tonight, appreciate you coming down. And with that, we'll get started with the reading of the minutes of the March 3, 2014 regular meeting, and approving the minutes of the March 3 executive session.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as they were set out through the council people for both meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? And appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, clear. First resolution tonight is a follow-up of what we did at the Board of Works last Tuesday of the week tomorrow. We declared a financial emergency because we realized that our funds were not going to last until our next tax draw. And Julie called me in on Tuesday. Herb, Pam, and I discussed it. I went home Tuesday night thinking, what will we do? And of course, everybody had in mind layoffs. I don't particularly like that idea of layoffs, about as low as we can get. So we sat down and we brainstormed, and we came with the items that we have done and the things that we proposed. On Tuesday, I believe, at noon, we met with the unions and the department heads, and they pledged to support us, to work together to see if we can't kind of turn things around by doing these simple things. And everybody pledged their support. Since that time, we have been working under those conditions. And tonight, it was well that Mr. Baker thought that the council should put their stamp of approval on what we've accomplished or what we intend to do. If you would, and if you don't want to, that's okay too. It was the Board of Works' responsibility, they run the city. But I'm open for discussion, and I would like to pass Resolution 2014-7, declaring that the city has a financial emergency and that we can take steps to rectify.
Do you want discussion from the folks out here or from council?
Whichever you prefer. If you want to listen to the folks out here.
Sure. Can I ask that?
You have a question, Nancy?
Yes. Why didn't we know this sooner?
I've known that since-
So that we could have cut some of the spending out.
We've known it since 2008, Nancy.
I haven't known it since 2008.
Well, every time we get budget reports or financial reports, it shows that our general fund has dwindled. Every year, it starts less and less and less. And it has.
Maybe we should have cut some of our spending.
Well, Nancy, we have cut considerably. I mean, the fire department and the police department are both down. In the 10 years since I've been here, they're each down at least 10 people.
Oh, no, I don't mean that way. I don't mean that way.
Well, our personnel cost unfortunately is our biggest cost. That's, I mean, that's, in wages and benefits.
We eliminated, in the city hall alone, we eliminated the janitor's job, we eliminated the city engineer's job, we eliminated the two billing clerks in EMS.
And a full-time police secretary.
And a full-time police secretary. Just to sit here and-
Well, I eliminated people, that wasn't what I had in mind.
Well, that's an insurance cost-
Where we put money in other areas.
Our health insurance costs have just skyrocketed, we have no control over that because of the claims that are turned in. That sets the rate, which is phenomenal. I mean, for a small city, the amount we're paying is ridiculous, really.
I, personally, for me, that not being aware of it, I think it was about 14 months ago, we had a gentleman retire at the transfer station, and I'm the group leader to transfer station, I talked to Julie, and I had said then, I'm pretty sure it's on record at the Board of Public Works meeting, that I'd say to do the financial constraints of the city, that I recommend that we use two part-time people. You remember that, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
So I was aware, it's just I don't think any of us really wants to stand and look and say, it is getting worse. It is getting worse.
I have another comment. I know a lot of this was probably due to, which I have said repeatedly, assessed values being lowered on property, the tax cap on top of that, and the Riverboat Fund. The more of those casinos they build, the less money you're going to get, and they're building them like crazy. So I know some of the, some of that caused this. And the assessed values and taxes are only going to get worse.
You must remember, in 2008, in March, we lost Bisteon completely. It was gone, they closed out. A year later, we lost the assessed value of $100 million, and you just have all figured it out, $6 a hundred. It's not very hard to figure that out. The very next year, the state put the tax caps on us temporarily, 2009. In 2010, they voted to amend the constitutional amendment, can't take the caps off. Now, I was at every one of those meetings, I traveled back and forth to Indianapolis constantly when we were doing that. We fought it, IAC fought it, because we knew this was going to happen to cities and towns and counties. Now, they said, they assured us that here's what's going to happen. Your tax assessments will continue to grow, and your caps will grow with them. That was fine in Carmel and Fishers and parts of Indianapolis, but in Connersville, where we were ordered by the court to do trending. And you know what trending is? If you sell a house in this neighborhood for this price, then that's what yours is worth, and that's how they balance it out. Our tax values have been going like this, and the caps are coming like this. So every year, we hit the caps sooner, and we lose more revenue, to the tune now of 2.8 million?
Two and a half.
Okay. We're running a city 2.5 or 2.8 million dollars less, not counting the Bisteon loss, than we were in 2008, and trying to keep up the same services. Now, that's very difficult to do. I think we've all done a great job together working at it, and it's been difficult. I have negotiated with the fire and the police, the streets, the EMS, and we have, we have looked at every avenue of saving money. We've tried to do things, we hired part-time police, we hired part-time firemen, we hired part-time street workers, we eliminated things. Every time somebody retired, we didn't replace them, with the exception, public safety, because we had caps that we had to keep 25 people. So the union contract called for 25. We kept it at 25, and that's where we've been. I don't know what else you could do to do it. And I have told them, and I have told you every time we met, when we were discussing last year the edit fund, I said, folks, please, keep enough in the edit fund for the pool payment. We may not get more edit money. And sure enough, the county council took the edit funds and are using it for utilities at the courthouse and the jail. And so we're not going to get enough this year to pay the pool payment. That's our edit project. So, you remember me telling you that when we were discussing? But you voted and spent the money. I didn't. I mean, I don't get to vote on this money we spend. And I can't see that we wasted any. We've done everything in-house to keep things up. We've tried to keep the buildings and properties in the best condition that we can. Our streets are falling apart. We get about $200,000 for Blacktop. Western Avenue is terrible. Eighth Street's coming through, I don't know, it's almost gravelled. Some of the other streets in town are terrible. This year, we're probably going to get $300,000 to spend on Blacktop. And that's another situation in the city. You have certain funds that can only be used on certain things. So your hands are tied, you can't use those funds for this or that. With what we're trying to put together now, we'll make it to our tax draw in June. When we get the tax draw in June, and hopefully it's not too low, hopefully a lot of people pay their taxes, we will be able to look at that tax draw, and by looking at the costs of where we are, we should be able to see if we can get through to December. If we make December, we'll have to do the same thing. When we get the tax draw, we're going to have to be sure we can make it through to June. And that's the way we're going to have to run until things get better, unless there's another source of revenue that I don't know about. I have tried every source of revenue I know. I've attended every meeting in Indianapolis, I was just up there last week hammering, trying to get them to drop the COAT tax. We have to have the Lloyd and the COAT in order to have public safety tax. I begged them, please, drop the COAT tax so we can drop it, so we can put the public safety taxes in place. And it didn't fly, as you know. IAC endorsed it, it didn't fly.
No, Mr. Mayor, when you say make it through June, and then what?
We get our tax draw.
Oh, I know that. Okay, but this is for clarification's sake. You say make it through June, and then we go back the way it was, or?
No, we're going to have to stay like this indefinitely until we get straight out.
That's what I was asking you, okay.
Unless you get another source of income.
Then the worst-case scenario after June would be layoffs, is that what you're saying?
I'm hoping we got enough money to go through like we are up until December.
That's what I'm saying. That question was for clarification.
Layoffs, in my estimation, is the last thing I want to do. We've got young policemen that have been hired in the last year or two, that have families that have left their job to come here. We've got a young fireman that has two babies in the hospital, and he needs to be the first one to get laid off. I don't want that to happen. I went home and wrestled with this all night, Tuesday night, and Julie and I brainstormed, hey, we do these things, we can make it to the tax draw. That's why we're trying to do this.
Okay.
If anyone's got a better idea, man, I'm here to listen to it. I'm right here to hear. Or another source of income.
Well, I'd say we're lucky to have the Riverboat Fund, because very few counties get that. And if we didn't have that, just think of the things we couldn't have been able to do in the last-
Now, that Riverboat money, every county gets a part of it.
State-wide. You're talking about the Lawrenceburg- Lawrenceburg money, yeah. That's gone.
That's not what we get every county.
Okay. Duh.
John?
Better stay here.
Huh? You better come up here, John, so we get you on TV.
Yeah, the Riverboat, statewide.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
I don't have the minutes of the executive meeting.
It's just a, oh, we don't really keep minutes of any executive meeting. Just do the spare.
Just note the real minutes that we have on. Go ahead, John.
My name's John Owen, I also work in the park, I'm a citizen here at Connersville. You know, I think we all get this, we've seen this coming for a long time, I don't know whether you agree with everything goes on, but, like I said, I've been here for a long time in the park, but this is another thing that we see a lot, and I know you guys struggle with it a lot too, is the unpaid taxes of abandoned homes. How can we get that back in our tax debt? It seems like people walk away from these properties, and then you guys have to struggle with tearing them down. What's the deal with, why can't we get them assessed? It seems like they walk away from it, and then it's gone. What's the answer there?
It's mostly banks that do that to us, but we do have some light at the end of the tunnel. The state has just come up with a fund, and us 15 counties down here are going to get 5.5 million in August, and we're going to apply for grants that we can use to take those down, and then hopefully, we won't have to take any money from our coffers to do that. And I froze all that, there's nothing going to be done until we get through this crisis.
Well, you know, I don't, you know, as a firefighter, it's very unsafe for us, you guys know, and that's not a big question. I'm just saying, even before it gets to us and accounting, why can't we go after them? Why, is there a law or something? I know it's probably hard to track them down, I understand that. Once it gets out, it could get forward.
There's no penalty, there's no penalty. If someone don't pay their taxes, there's no penalty, other than they're just going to lean on the property.
And a tax sale, a tax sale, of course.
Tax sale, yeah.
Property goes to tax sale, that's the remedy allowed by the Indiana Code for property on which taxes aren't paid. There's no criminal penalty and there's no civil penalty other than that.
I think the problem is, John, a big part of the problem is that it's banks that are in California and Arizona, and they don't, and they don't care.
They don't care.
It's easier for them just to let it go than to worry about it. They don't care if it's the grass in the yard, if taxes don't get paid. And then nobody wants to pay taxes on them, because it's so outrageous to get them. And usually, we have weed liens and all this stuff on them.
Right. It's unfortunate for the cities and towns when it gets to that. And that's demise of, you know, a lot of smaller cities, because you don't have to go very far, even out of Connersville to see that. But, you know, that was just my question, there's some way the city and county, I'm sure the county struggles with it too, as far as some way we could do that.
I tried to get, John, is it, John, can we file a suit against them? Can we file charges? There's no, there's no jail time for not paying your taxes.
Why not garnish their wages if they're still working?
I don't think we can do it.
The law doesn't require that for unpaid taxes.
I think the county does that. If they're an employee.
If they're an employee of the city, state, or county, you can garnish wages, but outside of that.
But generally speaking, the remedy is, if you don't pay your real estate taxes, they'll put the property up for tax sale, and if it doesn't sell a tax sale, then it goes to commissioner's sale. And hopefully, somebody will buy it, pay all the back taxes, and keep paying taxes on it. There's a lot of tax sale properties, you probably know.
Oh, yeah. And that's what's unfortunate for people that, like us, that we do pay our taxes, it's a burden, and I said, it hits us harder, plus all you guys who try to come up with taxes. That's all, question I have for that.
Okay, who'd like to speak next?
Mayor, what about this equipment tax?
Oh, don't even talk about that.
I mean, are we losing funds from that?
They, way it was passed, I haven't read it, but I got a little synopsis on it today. They're going to leave it up to the county to decide if the county wants to drop the equipment tax. So we won't have any say-so. The good thing is, it's stretched out to 2017. It doesn't hit us immediately. LSA gave us a report, what, a month ago, telling us that if that equipment tax was dropped, we would lose in Fayette County $850,000.
That was the city's part of $850,000.
That's our part, yeah. We would lose $850,000 more if that is adopted. Just hope that the county surely won't adopt it.
John, on this Resolution 2014-7, this is stating that the city council supports the mayor and the Board of Public Works?
Right.
That's what it entails?
In effect, you're joining in the declaration that there's a financial emergency in the city.
If there's no more discussion, I would like to make a motion, if not, I can wait.
One other question, John, from a legal standpoint, but what does declaring a financial emergency do legally?
Well, it's saying, in effect, we don't have the money to honor certain obligations. There's an emergency, there's a lack of funds to pay certain things. And that, that's about the only situation, short of bankruptcy, that allows a city to not honor its normal contractual obligation.
Would you ask, is there any more questions, John, please?
Any more questions?
I would like to make a motion, we've passed Resolution 2014-7.
Seven. And a motion and a second to pass pending orders 2014-7, declaring a financial emergency. Any further discussion? From anybody? Let me tell you something, I know we all have long faces and we're all sad, but I think we're going to come through this, I really do. I think by working together, I talked with the union people today, I've gone over and talked with employees at the street department, I've talked with firemen, I've talked with police officers, everybody knows what we have to do. Bloomberg got me when I was home for dinner tonight and said, what does this mean for your city? I said, it means that we all have to dig in and we have to work together to bring it back to the way it ought to be. That's what it means. And he says, well, at least you have a good attitude. No, I'm very sad about the whole thing. I'm almost at the end of my time here, and then this has to come up. But if we work hard together, I think we can make it. I talked with Matt this afternoon, and he's an attorney, and he's a fireman and an attorney in Indianapolis for the fire department. He thinks we can make it work with what we're trying to do. I'm meeting with the firemen, I don't know just how many, I think I'm meeting with the union, I don't, are you going to be there tomorrow, Troy?
I'm at the fire marshal tomorrow.
Okay, we will be working, meeting with you tomorrow, we will be working together. And I told Matt, come June, if you come down here, when we get our tax draw, we'll sit down together, we'll see where we are, see what we think we can do, see how tight or how loose it might be until we get to January, and we're going to have to be kind of like, you hear people, they say they live from payday to payday, that's what we're going to have to do until we get it straightened out. We're going to have to live from payday to payday. And we just hope that our people in the city, you know, will work with us. If everybody would cut their own grass, we wouldn't have to cut it. Like John says, if people would take care of these homes, it's our responsibility, you know, we wouldn't have to do it.
Excuse me, Mayor, is that meeting tomorrow at 9:30 with the fire folks?
Yes. Meeting over here.
Here? Yeah. Oh, sorry, I just didn't know.
Mayor, we have some things working as far as employment going, does that help us immediately, or is that a on-down-the-road thing?
It's the same way as we got into this situation. Bisteon left, now it's what, since 2007, 2008, it's taken a long time to get here, it's going to take us a long time to get back. Yeah, I'm thrilled to death, we have a cabinet company up there that is determined to grow and grow. And I told you last week, Andy told me, he wants to be the Amazon of home products in that building. If that happens, sure, it's going to get better and better and better, but it's going to take a while. It's going to take a while. We're not going to feel the effects of that in 2014, 15.
Do they own the building, what's better now?
Yes, they own the building.
They own it, we turn it over to them.
Yes. They're cleaning it up very nice, if you notice, there's lights on there at night. They even been working some at night, and I'm very pleased with what they're doing. Without them, we probably wouldn't have much hope, we'd have an empty building. That building has turned, and inside, it's gorgeous in there. They've insulated, they've painted it, they put all new lighting in it, they cleaned it, you wouldn't recognize it.
It was on TV the other night, inside the building.
Yeah. So we got, we got some, you know, Stance is growing, the Glower Company is growing, we got to keep them happy. Soppa's growing. I talked with a couple that are looking at starting a sporting goods store here, we've got a new store in the old shopping center, we've got some new buildings going up in the north end by Walmart. All this is going to add to tax value, especially when you get these retail places, they're going to pay taxes. So, more taxes people pay, the better off we are. What percent, we get 62% of the tax that we get, 59, what is it?
Of the property tax?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. 52% is what we get, like a local option and...
Because we have the majority of the population in the city, we do get a little more than the county gets normally, except with edit tax, of course, we're not going to get very much.
Do we have a list of the cost savings ideas? I mean, besides what I've read in the paper, is there a, is it an ever-changing list, because you're still meeting tomorrow?
We can put that list together, yeah, we're still working on things. I think what we intend to do with the fire department is kind of a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to meet yet.
What things we're going to do and not do. We're going to try to honor the contract in all ways that we can. And they're going to try to work with us to try to save money. Dave has already put a lot of things into place, he's not going to hire anybody to monitor grass, there won't be an officer doing that. We let our, one of our undercover officers go.
He was part-time.
He was part-time, we let him go.
He's thinking about just voluntarily doing what he was going to do before, what was supposed to be a plus, not giving credit.
So, and we're not going to spend any money. Law three that you authorized to tear that building down, we run a rent, we're not going to do it. I'll get David to go over there and put an emergency fence around it or something, he'll do something, make it as safe as we can this summer when kids begin to play.
We're going to sell the unpacker truck that we bought from CGS four years ago, still came to the mayor and I last week and said, we really have no need for this. CGS had told the mayor and I six months ago that they would be interested in buying it back. We contacted them, and we're going to sell that back to them for $25,000, so.
We gave 35, we used it four years, and he's buying it back for 25. That's a cash deal. Phil, Phil's helper, Zach Glover, resigned, and so that's one less at the street department, I don't intend to replace him. There's one board that works over there that's kind of a, I don't think he'd get his feelings hurt about, say he's a backyard mechanic, he can put a motor in, take a motor out, he can change oil. Chris Lucas and I went over and talked with Phil and Dave today, and I said, you know, when Phil needs help, let Chris Lucas go in there and help him, because there's a lot of things in the mechanic garage you can't do by yourself. And so I think we got that covered. So all those things, we're going to keep doing things every time we get a chance. Anybody have any suggestions? We're certainly open.
What's going on with the building in the park, is that still, that's what they go charging?
That's coming from a grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We have two grants from the Huffmire Estates, and that's going to be done with the grant. We were going to pay with Riverboat money, and just at the same time, I got a check sent to me by one of the attorneys and said, this can only be used in Roberts Park. I said, hey, this is perfect, we'll just put it on that building, because it was already ordered, I think one of your men's put it up.
Rod has to be last, you know.
Yeah. And the work that's being done in the pavilion is being paid for by the Lions Club. Lions Club's buying all the material in there.
I got a question. How much money, I know you took over the billing of the ride and their Ford by billing, how much money did the city have to pay when you maintained that when you owned it?
What building?
How much money, that's Ford billing, how much money did the city have to pay during the time that they-
We paid the light bill, and we paid for the insurance during the time we owned it, and we mowed the grass. We're done with all of that.
Okay. I thought I asked.
We were lucky, we got some grants that helped us, we didn't have to pay it all. I don't want to sit here and tell you we paid it all, we got some grants. The Riverboat put about $5 million into it, they did all the remodeling. When they tore all the windows and stuff out of there, we sold the aluminum out of there, we got some money to reimburse us for moving stuff.
Well, I said you put all those new windows out there, I didn't know.
No, the Lawrenceburg-
I had no idea.
Riverboat money put that all in there.
Oh, did?
Well, and then we had that energy grant from the state.
Yeah, we had an energy grant. We had an energy grant here, too, that did a lot of work inside here.
At the February, I believe it was February 18th meeting, a couple of things that I know that the council did. One was give $1,000 to every non-contractuals. Is that still going forward? Did it go forward?
That went forward the first of the year. Most of that came from utilities.
Can you tell me what the sum total was when you add that all together?
She could. I couldn't.
We only have 18 non-contractuals.
$18,000.
But most of it was utility.
The other thing that was mentioned at that meeting was, and Mayor, you mentioned it, was upcoming, I guess, a summer program that's happening in the park where you mentioned you were going to have a full director that was going to run this two weeks and possibly hire senior high schoolers in order to help implement the program? Will that still be going forward?
Yes, it's self-supporting.
It's self-supporting?
It's self-supporting.
It's something that we charge for. There's a fee for the day camp, and this will be the third year or the fourth year we've had it.
I understood it was self-supporting when he mentioned that he was going to have a more qualified person. I questioned whether or not there's going to be money for that.
There's still, there's enough money from the fees to cover that.
We got in trouble. We had some parents come against us because we didn't have enough adult supervision. We're going to have an adult at each time. And of course, with the Obamacare, we're only allowed to work 29 hours, so it takes three. They can only work 29 hours a week. All of the things in the park are self-supporting, even the sports programs in the summertime. And when you hear us just a little bit, maybe it was this morning, we transferred. When we transfer those non-reverting funds, those are fees that people have paid for to play soccer. They played to play baseball. Then when we need money to do the soccer field strip it, or we need money to fix something, we take it out of that non-reverting fund and put it in there. So that pretty much. What costs you is the maintenance of the park system, and that's a big cost because I think 123 acres got to be cut. We do that with kids, high school kids, so we do it as cheap as we can do it. That's a big thing. We've done the cemetery. We used to hire somebody to take care of the cemetery. We paid them $15,000. They were in charge of the cemetery, and then they hired someone to cut it. Last five, six years, we've cut the cemetery ourselves. We just maintain it ourselves. We assigned two people over there. We cut it.
Is the cement filling hole down? You talked about the last meeting buying it.
Well, we would have liked to have done something with the baseball field. We've got no money. And I've had some people call me, tell me they're willing to do a fundraiser, you know, kind of like they did years ago. But the city doesn't have any money. And what we did this afternoon, we told Ronnie Coldiron, "Don't spend any money, but go ahead and see what it would take to get the land bought." There may be someone.
You weren't checking about buying the land yet?
Not with city money. But if someone would come forth and maybe donate money to buy the land or something, we need to work at getting that out of there.
It's still going to cost you moving that stuff out there.
It's a long, it's a long-term thing, Ruby, but what are we going to do? We've got to have a place for our kids to play on. It certainly isn't a good place down there.
Well, if you broke, you broke. You know, if you don't have the money, you can't do it.
We're only broke.
I know we need something for kids to do, but still, we're going to have trouble getting out there.
I told you, Ruby, we're not going to spend any city money on that. But maybe somebody will come forward, you know? Last time we did that, Huckmires came through and gave us a car, and we raffled it off. So maybe there's somebody out there that wants to name that baseball park after their dad or their grandpa or something. You never know. Mr. McFarland looking at me, maybe he wants it for the McFarland Baseball Park.
Be a little one.
It is a little league, you know?
Mayor, I've had several calls this week from people that evidently have been talking down at the senior center, and they're complaining about you taking a car home and department heads taking cars home and using them for non-city business. And another complaint was in the summer. The street sweeper sweeps the downtown every day. And I just wanted to mention, I've been getting these calls.
If I drive my own car, I can charge the city 55 cents, minus 55, 56, I forget what it is. And I don't mind doing that with one exception. This morning, when I left home, I went to breakfast, and then I went to the park, and then I went to the street department, and then I came here. The law says that I have to record the mileage every time I start and stop. Do you know what a difficult job that is? I did that for a couple of years, and I finally just gave up and just didn't charge. And I still don't charge. When I go to Indianapolis, take John or take, I take one of the funeral home cars, a big car, take three or fours. I never charge. When I use the city car for home business, I pay for the gas. If you look at my gas consumption, it's the smallest in the city, right? I put my own gas in the car because I'm not going to, if I have to go someplace, I'm not going to run home and get a car and then go. I go. Now, let me, I go every weekend. I go every night to meetings. I go to 90-year-old birthday parties. I go, nobody knows in this room how much the mayor does. I never knew when I took this job. I had no idea what you had to do. Just today, I've been to two schools. I've been to the street department. I've been to the park department. I can't even remember. But you look at my thing, Melissa's got it, and you'll see where I go. Because you have to go to each grade school. You read to people. Today, we had a class that was the best at Granville Elementary, had the best attendance. And we had a pizza party, and the mayor has to cut the pizza and serve it and present the awards. On weekends, you go to, usually it's 90 to 100-year-old birthday parties because the lady will call and say, "My mom's going to be 90. She's at Lincoln Manor. I'd like for the mayor to be there." Now, that don't sound like much of a deal, other than when I'm down in my garden working, I've got to go home, take a shower, get cleaned, go over there for 10 minutes to show up. And I don't mind. That's my job. I do it. But I go a lot. And if I have to, I would say that, I just looked at my car. This entire year, or in the third month, I think it was 651 miles. I get, I have a report that they print out every, the department heads. Troy has got the chief's car. If there's a fire, that's what he takes to the fire. He has a radio in it. He has red lights on it. That is part of his perk. He doesn't get any overtime whatsoever. The other firemen in the old days, prior to Tuesday. And again, if we have a big fire in this town, I've told Troy, call every fireman you can find. We'll find the money to pay for it someplace.
I wouldn't be doing my job if I get phone calls and didn't bring this stuff out.
But I want to answer your questions.
And I'm glad to.
That's why the department heads use that. Dennis, the assistant chief, called me Saturday. He said, "Mayor, I'm filling up my car with gas." And I recorded, I've got a little book, every day I write down. Because Dennis doesn't have a car. His wife drives to work. And he filled his car with gas on Saturday. He tells me what he does. David hardly ever uses his police car.
Back and forth to work. And he calls out.
And he is taking calls now. He goes out and arrests people. I think just a couple of weeks ago, I left the city council meeting. He stopped somebody on the way home for speeding. What was your other question? Did I catch them all?
The other complaint was sweet street sweeper.
Well, we try to keep Main Street clean. We start at 5 o'clock in the morning, and he works till 2:00. And I guess he does sweep Main Street a lot because we want to keep it nice and clean. Right now, the street sweeper's sitting over there with no head on it. Antifreeze is getting in, out of it about a gallon a day, and Phil's got it all pulled apart. We can't get a motor, and we can't figure out what's wrong. The head's not cracked. The block's not cracked. The head gasket's good. He's trying to figure it out. I hope we get it on the street because we've got sand all over every place. But now that's the answer to your questions.
Thank you.
Best I know how. Any other questions? This is a good session. I'd like for you to.
I have a question. Are we going to deposit employee checks?
Yes.
Why are we doing that?
Saves money. We already do it. We do, it's called direct deposit. And it just goes directly into your checking account that way.
What if they don't have one? A checking account?
So far, we haven't had anybody come in and say we didn't have any.
Most people do that anymore. The school did a couple of years ago.
As well say, the county does mandatory.
I was unaware of that.
I was going to say Medicare, Social Security.
You're not doing part-time, are you doing?
No, not part-time. Full-time employees. That's Troy.
We want to know about the retirees.
We'd like to do retirees, too.
But you're not doing it yet so far, right?
We haven't yet, but we may send out letters to you guys, too. Truthfully, I think it would make it a lot easier for you. That way, you don't have to wait for somebody to get your check to you. It'll just be deposited directly into your account.
We have another organization involved. We have, we had a problem with that bank card, so that's what we had.
Actually, we, the city's been doing this for two and a half years, probably. And I did it right off the bat, and I've not had one problem with it. And I don't know that we've hardly had any issues with it. Think anybody, people are a little leery of it, and they're afraid of it in the beginning. But once you do it, it's like, oh, man, this is great.
But Julie, they get their check stuff showing.
We're not going to do that anymore either. We'll have available where they can get an email. We can email it to you. We've got a new program. We can email it to you. If you want to stop, you're welcome to come down to City Hall and pick one up. But we are not going to take the paper and the envelopes and the manpower any longer to fold those all up. So it's just, it's a little way to save some money. I mean, the check cost alone is really high, so.
One of the things I have never said to you, and I'll say to you tonight. When I took office, the mayor's job called for me to get $1,480 more than what the former mayor got. When I took office, I did not take that money from the tax. I did not, I started at the same rate that the mayor was getting when I replaced him. When we took over the utility, state board of accounts mandates that you can't spend tax money to run the utilities. And the mayor's in charge of utilities. The mayor took the place of utility board president. And they pay me, I think it's around $168 a month, $180 a month, something like that. That's where my raise came from, the utilities. I get $180 a month to take care of the utilities. The utility board president that ran the utilities prior to me running the utilities got $10,000 a year. So much for each utility. So much for water, so much for sewers, so much. And mine's all combined, and I think I get about $180 a month. It's direct deposited, so I never see it. But it's state law. You can't ask somebody to do the utilities and pay it with tax money.
But you did get that $1,000 raised.
That came from the utility. That's the utility money I'm telling you about.
Well, I thought you got $1,000 with the dead workers.
I did, but it came from utilities. It did not come from tax money. I am getting the same tax money that the former mayor got. And I didn't take the raise that he was entitled to and the new mayor was entitled to, and I did that voluntarily. It's against the law to lower an elected official's salary. You can't do it. But I voluntarily didn't take it because I knew we were in tough straits, and I was going to have to ask you folks to take tough straits. It's no secret. I don't think there's anybody in this room that hasn't heard me say over six years. Is there anybody here that hasn't heard me say that? So it didn't just come this week. It's just now it's getting tighter, and we're going to be more careful. Any further questions?
Mayor, we've got a motion.
Yes, we do have a motion. Are you ready for the question? Pending Resolution 2014-07 declaring a city financial emergency. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Here's one of the things that causes us to have just pending ordinance. I'm sorry. The next one. Wait until you hear the next one. Let's go with the, pending ordinance 3106. When we lured Wayzata to come to Connersville, we worked for about six months, tried to get them to come here. We offered them certain incentives, not a lot. We tiffed the building. We were thrilled to get them to come here. They closed their factory in Minnesota and brought them down here. They even brought some of their people that are moving here. It was my fault. I did not tell them about our stormwater charge. We have a stormwater ordinance that calls for us to charge so much for the impermeable surfaces, such as the roof, the parking lot. We all pay it. We pay it for the airport. We pay it for this building here. We pay it for the park buildings. We pay it for the fire stations. You pay $525 a month. It's your house for the impermeable places that water runs off and runs in a sewer. So after they came down here, they called for a meeting with us, and they said, "Do you realize that your charge is $108,000 for water to run off a parking lot we're not using and water to run off a roof that we're only using $575,000 square feet?" And I said, "Andy, I am sorry. We were so busy in negotiations, and we worked at it, and we worked at it. I did not realize that you didn't know that." Well, here's a company that's come down and invested $12.5 million in our community. So we called a meeting of a committee. We contacted a couple of lawyers in Indianapolis and asked if we could phase in this stormwater charge. So as they move into more and more of the building, they pay more and more. As they begin to use more and more of the parking lot, they pay more and more. We have had a committee based with economic development people, John Baker, myself, and what's the attorney in Indianapolis?
Nick Isles, who I talked to. He's a municipal law attorney.
We have come up. We have come up with a plan that builds an incentive into people coming here. Do you want to read the ordinance, John?
Well, I'll highlight it. Yeah, it's, the idea is, is like the mayor says, is to offer economic incentives for new and existing buildings to create more jobs. And this applies not only to a company like Wayzata, but to other companies that may be adding jobs. And the ordinance in effect says if an employer commits to creating a minimum of 300 new full-time, 40-hour-per-week jobs in a five-year period, the stormwater rate will be reduced by 50% for five years only. And if an employer commits to 150 new full-time jobs, the rate will be reduced by 25% for five years. And if an employer commits to 75 new full-time jobs, it'll be reduced by 12.5% for five years. And within that five-year period, if any of the employers don't meet their commitment, we have to, they have to pay back a percentage to the extent that they didn't meet their commitment. So if they, if they get, if they, say, the 300 new full-time job employer only provides 150 new jobs, then he would have to pay one-half of the stormwater that was reduced back to the city of Connersville. And we enter into a contractual agreement with an employer to that effect. So it's a way to create jobs.
It's an amendment to our stormwater contract. I think the council will understand it. I negotiated with Wayzata. They're happy with this. They're pleased that we came forth and put this incentive in place. As I said, just, I think it was three weeks ago, Thursday night, he told me, he said, "This is going to be the Amazon of home products here." That's what I am intentions. If it is, our grandchildren, our children are going to be lucky people. So you all had this ordinance before you since last Thursday or Friday? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm going to accept pending ordinance 3106.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept pending ordinance 3106. A start-of-use ordinance amendment.
Mayor, excuse me, I should have said something. This has to be introduced tonight, and it has to be set for public hearing. I'm sorry.
We can't, I thought we could vote one time.
Well, you can. That's in effect introducing them. But it can't be passed until you have a public hearing. We have to give a ten-day notice, Julie, you know the drill, right? So anyway, I'm sorry, I should've mentioned that earlier.
I haven't intended to do it one time.
All right, that's fine.
Pending ordinance thirty-one oh six, the stormwater user fee amendment. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? On the roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
We have passed that on first reading, and we will advertise that and have third reading on the next meeting, which is the first meeting in April. Now, this is the one I don't like. We were mandated by the state to do this ADA study at the tune of about almost a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we had to do it, and we had to have it going by January one of this year, or we wouldn't be eligible for federal or state money. Now, that's one of those things. We're gonna do this study, and we all know we don't have the money to do what the study tells us we have to do. But yet, we have to spend almost a hundred thousand dollars that's unfunded. We have to pay for it. These are the kind of things that come up. That's why it's hard to predict where you are. So this is pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven. This ordinance is the ADA transition plan, half the cost for professional service. And we set it for public hearing, so this is the public hearing. I'm open for comments.
Who is it that we're getting to do the study?
The Strand and Associates. They've been working on it. We've got half of it completed, so this is the second half of it.
As my wife would say, it's like throwing money in a carjack hole. That's what she tells me when I buy a motorcycle.
That's what he said that time, too.
CCB has three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars.
That's where we plan to borrow from later on if we have to.
Yes.
And it has to be paid back.
Yes, by the end of the year.
Yes. I'm going to pass pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven because we have no alternative.
Second.
You're getting a little ahead of it. I am post-public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can get a little.
Public hearing. Anybody want to comment? Any council want to comment?
How long do we have to implement this plan?
Two thousand and nineteen, isn't it?
To fully implement it?
I think so. They love to pass things like that in Indianapolis and Washington and send them down to us, and we have figured out a fund. Anybody else? Before I close this public hearing, public hearing closed, I'll take your motion.
Okay, I like the motion that we pass pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we pass pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven. ADA transition plan, half the cost for professional services, forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Would you like to suspend the rules and pass it on third and final reading?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven on third and final reading. Any further discussion? Suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carried. You can move on to the other.
Some of you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh seven on third and final reading. Forty-six thousand dollars to complete the payment of the ADA transition plan, plan. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Like ordinance pending ordinance thirty-one oh eight, this is an additional appropriation from the redevelopment, for the redevelopment commission, twenty-one thousand dollars in electricity, five hundred dollars in water. This is for the bank building. This is money we receive in rent. We have to receive it, and then we have to appropriate it so they can pay the bills until, and I think they've got it sorted. I think.
Mr. Mayor, run it by me again. This is for what?
This is for the fifth third building.
The redevelopment commission.
Redevelopment commission owns it, which is an arm of the city.
Okay.
And they collect the rent. Julie gets it, and then we have to appropriate the money to pay the bills.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do.
And you're pretty sure it's open?
They told me it was yesterday. Discussion, motion, whatever you would like to do here.
I'm going to accept pending ordinance thirty-one oh eight.
Second.
Got a motion to pass pending ordinance thirty-one oh eight on first reading. Appropriating twenty-one thousand for electricity and five hundred dollars for water for the fifth third building for the redevelopment commission. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
All seven votes are yes. The ordinance passes. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
Don't move.
Second.
On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You'd like to go on to third reading?
Some of them.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one oh eight on third and final reading. An additional appropriation, twenty-one thousand for electricity, five hundred for water for the redevelopment commission for the fifth third building. Have a roll call vote.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Yeah, pass it. Announced it. Thank you. Old business. Anybody have any old business they wanna bring up?
Just a reminder for the council and the mayor and everybody, and also everybody watching, you know, TV land. But next week, the twenty-fourth, on Monday, we're gonna be changing the light at Twenty-first and Western. And that's when the caution lights go up, the other side signs go on, the east and west signs will be added to saying, cross-traffic has to right away. We'll be doing some studies up there. The police department will be at certain times of the day, especially when the traffic's busy, to see how it's gonna work. We're gonna do this for a while and just kinda play up here and see how it works, and see if it's gonna be a solution to some of the traffic issues we have up there. You know, stop and think, we're not gonna have all this stuff, you know, sometimes. And I had, I heard from one businessman a pretty other day, said he gets it all the way backed up past Eighteenth Street, and then sometimes it's all the way to Twenty-first Street, and it's, you know, and of course, it's solid two-way traffic going from Twenty-first to Eighteenth at times. So next week is spring break, and schools are out, and this is a good time to do it and monitor it, and let everybody get used to it and get it out there. Like, newspaper, radio's gonna put it out, and I'll have to see if I can get the television to remind people, too, that that's gonna be changed, though. So pay attention. That's about it.
No question. Do we have enough money to cover the?
That's not, it's not much. I don't know what the cost's gonna be, but it's a fraction of what.
I mean, for doing the?
We're only trying to change the lenses and add them to a.
No, I mean the monitoring. I mean the extra.
Monitoring?
Yeah.
We'll do it in the police department. I'll have an officer go up there at certain times of the day.
Okay. Well, one of the discussions was the buses, so I don't know that spring break is the best time to.
No, well, it's free to get people used to it. The buses, Jane is aware of it, and we've talked, and we're gonna see how it works.
Schools are in session next week.
Right. It was the buses that were having trouble.
Right, but they won't be running next week, so.
So we're just gonna have to play up here and see how it goes. That's part of it. And she's aware of it, and we discuss it, and, you know, we'll try it. We'll try something new, you know, see if it works. If it don't work, then we can do another option. You know? Thank you.
Miscellaneous business. Nancy, you got anything?
No.
Mr. Creach?
Mr. Mayor, I have something. I'm not sure if it's appropriate time, but I'll bring it up, and if it isn't, that's fine.
Miscellaneous, that's pretty appropriate.
Okay. The, everyone has a city water bill. There's a ten-dollar fee for trash that is collected through the Connersville Utilities. The Connersville Utility charges five percent for doing that. And due to the financial constraints of the city, I was curious, since you and the president of the city council and board of public works, that amounts around thirty-one thousand dollars a year, their fee for collecting it. I was just curious if perhaps that could be lowered to maybe one percent, and the other money go into the general fund?
Sounds like a good idea to me. What do you think, Fran? You're president of the council.
Yeah, excellent, excellent idea of Mr. Baker, what would be the process to change that?
Well, I'm gonna have to look into it. Tom, in what ordinance is that requirement you're referring to?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what the ordinance is. It's just, everyone gets one of these monthly sheets on the, on the trash fee. Everybody has city water's ten-dollar trash fee.
Yeah.
The utilities charges five percent, or whatever that is, for their fee for collecting it.
Yeah.
And average around twenty-six hundred dollars.
Sure. Is that a matter of ordinance?
No, it's agreement between the utility and the city to collect that.
Is there an agreement, written agreement to that effect?
I think the.
I think it's an agreement, yeah.
Written agreement? Yeah, I would need to see that.
You know where it is?
I'm sure we have a copy.
Could you look into that to see if it, if it needs to be changed, if it could be by the city ordinance, or if it's with the board of public works?
Yeah, I sure could, but it sounds like it can be. I think.
Yeah, it would help the city coffers.
Right. But I'll need to see the agreement, Julie, still.
Okay.
That's all I have.
What would one percent, Tom, be?
Average around two thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars a month going back into the city's general fund.
Hey, that's pretty good.
Yeah, last year, we paid thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-three cents to the utilities for collecting that.
And I think that's when they were doing three billings and they passed that. Now, they only bill one time a month. And it's, and they have a company in Indianapolis prepare the deal.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I think every, all the departments are trying to, to hang on, and, and, you know, I look out and I see people that, like me, used to work in factories, and I know, I'm not defending the mayor, but I know no one likes to, and I know he's wrestling with this, the council, funding, anybody getting laid off. But I look at these folks, and I work in factory, and they just walk up to you and say, "You're laid off." They don't even say you're, they're sorry. I just think that, in my rambling, if all the departments can just reach back, and maybe we can make this, you know, hopefully without anybody getting laid off. So I'm trying to do this.
We'll certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Did you have anything, Debbie?
No.
Dave?
Good job, Tom.
Miscellaneous?
Yeah, really. Good job, Tom.
Thank you.
Good thinking.
Nothing. Fran?
No, I had nothing.
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Miscellaneous?
Um, yeah. Well, I've kind of been chewing over something that was mentioned earlier. The non, I think we were getting our wires crossed a little bit. The non-contractual one-thousand-dollar raises, that went to how many? Didn't it go to like eight?
Eight. Totally, it was like eighteen or nineteen people.
Okay.
It was all the people that hadn't had a raise since I've been here, all the non-contractual.
It's, okay. The street superintendent, the assistant street superintendent, secretary, the two guys at cable TV, the three people at the park, the non-contractual, the director, assistant director.
Secretary.
The secretary, the four girls, three girls in my office, Melissa, Diana, Jackie.
And a good many of those came from utilities, all the ones that are connected with utilities.
I remember that part because of them doing the work for the utilities. Okay. Okay, okay.
And that was actually all done last year of budget time. It got brought up again in February.
Okay. So there weren't six or eight in February to match up with those, to catch up?
No, we didn't change them. Those hours were changed in February.
And then I just have, you know, I've had some of the similar phone calls, you know, wanting to make sure that every department got hit, not just the two biggest ones. And I know the, the paper, I think today, you know, the fact that the street department wasn't really gonna take a hit didn't sit too well.
They took a hit today, they lost a man.
Yeah.
And we won't replace that man. They'll be taking more hits, too. Mr. Joe was talking through his app. We're gonna take more hits because we're gonna be lean and clean over there.
I'm not hiring a part-time help this summer, from what I understand, so.
Okay. So is that like, every department that hires part-time not gonna get it, then?
No, 'cause we're gonna try to do some blacktopping, too. I can't blacktop with college kids.
Well, in the parks department, we have to have part-time summer help. We just can't get through.
For mowing, yes.
But in truth, we, when the mayor, we have the department head meetings, the street department, all departments were there, and we discussed overtime situation. We discussed the clothing allowance, the street department's giving up their clothing allowance, too, and fuel usage. He asked all the departments to.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we, I, we all received the executive order, you know, in the mail. Are we gonna be kept abreast of what the actual changes are gonna be?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Because other than, other than hearing it through the rumor mill, I haven't been told anything.
I've been trying to keep you up. I keep firing stuff to you.
Okay.
I try to send you everything so you know what's going on. And I have a department head meeting once a month with the department heads. And I think what I'm gonna try to do, and I don't know how we'll do it, but I'm gonna try to meet with the department heads like at one o'clock and call the unions in at one-thirty, so we can all work together and see where we're going and how we're doing. I'll discuss that with fire tomorrow and the police, but I think that, I talked to Matt today, and I told him, soon as we get our June draw, I want him to come down and review it, so he can look at it, the same as we look at it, and see where we make it. And, you know, it does seem like we're picking on police and fire. But they are the largest, you know, it's pretty hard to make a million out of a, out of a department. They only gets five hundred thousand. And it's about five point five million for police and fire. That's about how much tax money we get, about five point six, maybe?
Although we don't get that. Last year, we got lower than five million.
Yeah. So we quite, we don't quite get enough tax money to pay police and fire. So that's why, you know, we are picking them because they're the biggest. I mean, that, that's the only place we can get the money. But we're gonna get a lot of money from other places also. We're gonna work at it. I have two things I wanna bring up. Number one, we've been giving these recycle bags away. It costs us a bundle. We wanna start charging three dollars and fifty cents. That's what they cost us. That's a big roll of fifty bags. I don't think that's our line. I wanna hear your discussion.
Makes sense. I agree.
Agree?
Yep.
Okay, I'll have Mr. Baker prepare an ordinance, and we will change that, and we will change recycle bags immediately. Three dollars, I think they'll be, they'll use them more wisely when we start charging, because we find them. John?
I got a question about that, Mayor.
Okay, wait just a minute. We found out today there were some in an apartment used for curtains. So I know it's been abused.
Well, you can use regular trash bags.
So we can see through it.
For curtains, you can.
Hold it, hold it, guys, hold it.
I just got a suggestion about, I think, you know, when the, when the new trash truck come out, I think we're all a little bit, you know, worried about that, how it work. I think that things worked excellent. It, you know, the whole deal and everything with the trash cans and stuff. Why can't we go to a recycle trash can? Would that work? I mean, I know it's not gonna work with the trash truck.
We would love to.
Instead of the bags? Because a lot of communities have the little, like, the blue.
And we got the tippers on the truck, but what would it cost us to buy those cans?
Those cans are really high.
John?
Fifty-two dollars a piece, I think.
It's, if you went to a tipper can for those, it would be over five hundred thousand dollars. Because weren't those cans around ninety dollars?
No, they're fifty-two.
Fifty-six. We paid fifty-six for the cans. Okay, so it'd be over three hundred thousand dollars.
To purchase the.
To purchase the cans.
I just see a lot of communities doing that instead of bags.
Yeah.
That was our original hope, that we could head in that direction, but right now, there's no way we can, we can afford.
It's a good idea, though. You're right.
I see a lot of communities doing that. I know you guys struggle.
It's a great idea.
I see them all the time. You know, we're, we're very set on recycling. In fact, our trash, we could probably go two weeks and not even have trash picked up easily. We have one small trash, but our recycle's a different store. You know, I think if we did more, that would have less trash.
You're exactly right.
Thank you.
Another thing that you might need to look at is, I believe Governor Pence signed a new recycling bill, and I'm not sure what's in it. It might help us out. I'm not sure what's in it.
I didn't see anything. I got the legislative summary today, but I didn't see.
I, I think what, what Mr. Rollins was saying was, it was in the star. I think within five years, the goal is fifty percent recycling. And Frank Shomel has asked me this for years, what can we do? Ours runs about ten percent. And I told Fran, I don't know. You know, we give you the bag, we use, it's right at the end of your, end of your sidewalk. We pick it up for you. I don't know what you can, what you can do to encourage it more, but I read that same article. Within, I think.
I think when we charge for them, it's gonna deter recycling somewhat, but I can't see us giving those bags away like that.
Yeah, but you can't beat the price of that.
Well, I honestly don't think it'll deter it, because I think that they're getting abused. I think a lot of people use them for things that they were never meant to be used for.
Well, anyway, the consent of the, John, fix me an ordinance, start charging recycle bags three dollars and fifty cents a roll.
Right.
Hose House, where's Donna? Donna? Where's Donna?
She left.
She left. She got tired of it. Donna Schroeder, who is president of the historic Connersville, came to us two weeks ago and again today, wants to take over the Hose House, and for us, we have a fifty-year lease for a dollar a year. She wants us to give it to them, and they'll maintain it. They have gone in there and redone it and fixed it, and they plant flowers around it. She wants the city to give it to her. Does it take the council to give it to them?
We ought to do it by written ordinance.
Okay. How do you feel about that, council?
Now, is that the little fire station off seven?
Oh, that's right.
That would be great on this. Troy had anything you can put in there?
It's a little dinky.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep. Does everybody agree?
Yep.
And then along as Mr. Baker. Now, there, I said this today at noon, the paper will read tomorrow, city council on desperate financial state gave fire station away. I see him writing. Okay. Public forum.
My question again, why don't they put it on the bottom?
Melissa got confused. We did it the last time. The last time it was right, Ruby, and you weren't here.
Well, I was announced, I was going to Florida, so I could have been everything on my house, but I didn't. That was a bad situation there.
I don't know who told on you, but I didn't.
We didn't know where you were. We were watching her house. She didn't need to worry about that.
But it's not a good idea.
Okay.
Well, I see the public forum down at the bottom again, because here you got this department ahead, all this here.
Okay, we'll put it at the bottom. Let's, let's have the EMS commander, where is he?
Okay, for February, our city share, our expenses was $43,892.95. Our receipts were $17,340.5, per total of $26,578.90. And we made 171 runs for the month, 418 for the year as of that day.
I tell you, your car, you're at 470 miles. Did you have to go someplace or something?
Went to Indianapolis on a couple of occasions for training.
Okay.
We had a mapping school, did one up for you.
Yeah, Dale, I'm sorry.
At the head, here you have January instead of February.
Yeah, that's the mistake.
Dale, you had told me you hired a name. You have 14 full-time people. Now, are you going to be able to survive with this overtime thing?
I hope so. We have four part-time that we're going to continue to try to use also.
So, okay, that's either 14 full-time plus, four part-time, you say? Okay.
And hopefully we can get through it all without any problems at all.
Thank you.
It is the plan. Anything else?
Parks and Recreation. You got your report in front of you? The income in February.
There's good news about the Roberts Building that is being booked. At 13 times, he said, on Saturday.
Got your report, any questions? Little season passes, 15% discount, March only. Everybody look at that. That's important, you put that in the paper. Anything else on parks?
The building materials on the Roberts Building? What?
They've been shoring up the basement. They took the furnace out, they've been doing that. I think they've just been buying building materials.
I mean, just, I'm just asking, because we spent a lot, quite a lot of money on that.
All of that came from donations in Riverwood. Police Department. And again, that's one of the things that makes money, the buildings take in money to make their way.
Police part of monthly report, we had 944 law reports, seven citations, one ordinance violations, three warnings, five injury accidents, 45 property damage accidents, zero fatalities, 87 arrests. On the other side here, I haven't seen my expenditure for the month of, month of February.
What were the uniforms, David? Can you tell us?
Uh, it was for, um, our new officer. So we, we had to get him some, a couple of new things that he didn't get. He was a part-timer. He had some things, but he didn't have the jacket. And a few other things like that. And we still need to get him some dress uniforms, a few, a couple shirts and some pants. We haven't done that yet, we're kind of holding on. But, uh, we'll get that done here.
You got money in your budget for that?
We're not much, not at all, but we'll see what we can do.
Total cost to operate your department in February, $209,865.88.
Any questions, council? Thank you.
Are you done with the snow?
We're not talking about snow.
Okay. No question asked.
That was two weeks ago.
Where's your expense report, Dan? Here is mine.
I should have changed it all in together. I don't have.
He thought it was a vine, like you buy with all.
No, it's all on one page. Where's your overtime? About $10,000 in overtime, thanks to all the stones on Saturday and Sunday.
Awesome.
That doesn't include salary. They still have two pickup trucks, two dump trucks, full of sand.
I hope you have the utility report in your file. I told her to put it in.
And the amount to operate the street department in February, what is it, $98,000, $56.52, and as the mayor said, you had $9,654.63 in overtime.
I'm sorry if it's not. I told her to put it in.
I'd also like to just mention quickly that the people in the street department come up with some ideas, trying to save some money. You know, like two weeks ago, we started turning off heat and stuff on weekends, we're doing all kinds of little things that might add up eventually. They've got some ideas to change some things, so I've worked with the mayor and we're going to try and do some things that way. To try to save the money that we can, so, okay? And we're not going to have any part-time help this summer, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Financial transfer.
Uh, you have your report in front of you, have any questions for, say a few words? I'll make it brief. As I said earlier, about 14 months ago, I got with Julie due to financial constraints, made a recommendation that we eliminate one full-time position and created the two part-time. And we, I talked to Julie again and we were trying to cut more and more expenses. And those two part-time fellows, I'm going to eliminate eight more hours per week, what they work. It's not much, but we're, we're trying to do the best we can.
What was the state permit cost? $2,000, Tom?
Uh, the state permit is $2,000 a year, and then every five years, it's what, Julie, 12, 12,000, something like that?
It's cost of operation, I think.
I guess. State likes to.
I think it's an IDIM thing, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, that's what, that's what pays the inspectors, actually.
Anything else, Tom?
The tip.
Any questions for our fire department?
In the month of February, we had 75 runs, 103 hours in emergencies, 57 hours in inspections, six investigations, seven free plans, 98 hours training. We had approximately $15,000 in damages. Overtime was spent, $3,485, $951 of that is F.O.S.
Cost of your department, Troy, $206,741.10 last month.
Any questions?
I have a question. Saturday's paper, Brownout, what's running at mine, the slope?
Brownout is a closing of a station to meet financial obligations and cuts.
So what's the, what's the, I, I know it works seven, sometime you have seven, eight, nine, whatever. What, what is the minimum that you feel you can get by with?
Um, when Leonard came in as mayor, he asked the union to go from nine to seven. Seven was debated and debated, and seven is what we feel it takes to open, keep all three stations open, and that is a very minimum.
Well, what I was getting at, Troy, because I negotiated with Bill and, and I think Mr. Sparland, but anyway, what I was getting at, what happens if you have six people? You operate with six?
Uh, we operate with six.
With one station, or how do you do that?
With emergency declaration, my understanding of it, and I apologize, I was having a surgical procedure done on Tuesday. But my, um, in the department head, my, um, beating, my understanding was to operate the way we had to operate. When we're at six, we have to close a station. Now, why did we close that station? There was a lot of reasons. We have a truck out of service, manpower issues, just a lot of things, the amount of runs that we take. It wasn't an easy decision. It was my decision and only my decision, but I did call the battalion chiefs in and ask them their opinion, but it was my decision and I stand by it. I feel that it's best to stay at seven men. I don't know if we can afford to stay at seven men. Leonard and me talked about it today. There's things that they're going to, they're going to try to work with, with doing. Uh, my interpretation of law and the FLSA law and the changing of how we schedule firefighters was that we do not move them, to knock them out of their scheduled times. So Leonard has a lawyer that's volunteered to take that on for us that's familiar with the FLSA law and a lot more intense than what we are.
We'll negotiate tomorrow. We'll try to figure out how we're going to do it.
Well, I guess my question was, would you let the battalion chiefs, let's say tomorrow, whatever, and you've only got, say, six people? Would that battalion chief, if you weren't here, would he have that opportunity to say, I, I want to have just one station operating? Or, or would you, would you do two, what?
I issued an order, which I brought them, if you would like for me to pass them out, that basically says I am to be informed of how many people is at the stations when they know at that time. We use, we have to know before seven o'clock. I'm to be informed. I give them the right to suggest what they do, but it still comes through me.
What Mike?
Would I ask, would I ever go for one station? No. But if, if I am ordered to run with what I have, and I have three firefighters show up, you'll have one station. If I have four firefighters show up, you may have two stations. So the scenarios are, you know, they're just too numerous.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't, Troy wasn't done on you. I don't mean it that way.
Oh, no.
I meant, you're on vacation and, and you know, we've got, we've got a battalion chief and he says, because the, the big thing is safety is what I'm trying to say.
Well, by law.
Would it not be, would it not be better if, if you only had, say, six people? Have them all at one fire station or three at one and three at another? If it came to that.
By law, um, they are second in command and they are authorized, and like when I was having a medical procedure, they are, they are second in command. That's why they got a pay raise. They do make those decisions.
Okay.
So that is what the law states, the second in command can make those decisions. But under this circumstance, they were to call me.
I was just curious how to, how it worked.
Yeah. I mentioned the Indiana code 364 on how the fire departments work as far as that. Hopefully we'll get it resolved and we'll get through this. I, I believe if you look at 57 hours of inspections, and I know I missed some, we're busy. People are busy, people are, jobs, you know, people are working, starting to work. So, I mean, we'll, we'll make it through this. It's just a bump. In 30 or 40 years, we've had these bumps.
Troy, I have a question. With all due respect, I don't know how to run your department, know this much. But if you're using D-shifters to fill in for sick absences, would it be better to know by like, say, 6:00 AM to give yourself?
It's contractual, but as far as using part-time, I suspended it as of Tuesday of last week because of the question of not being able to start the trucks or not being able to train. These gentlemen, I cannot put any more risk on my firefighters or the public with these gentlemen. It works at six and one. I tried five and two and it did not work with, with part-time. But now, the question is, um, does it save money? You see it saves money. It brought your overtime costs way down. But when you, you got to realize, these are part-time firefighters. If you remember the firefighters that got killed in the, um, the wildfires out west. If we kill one of them, we do not cover them as far as a lot of insurance benefits that the, the full-time people and the pension people get. If, if we operate at six and one, I believe the union and I feel that it's that safe as long as we can train. But as long as we're not training, we cannot put these gentlemen in this position. I called all of them in, with my battalion chiefs, different battalion chiefs in the room, and I asked them what their feelings were and the part-timers felt. Some of them haven't been here for four to six months because of the way they get, they're, they're working other jobs. Some of them have. A few of them could come right in and work. But if you call them in a, in that situation, you're not going to get the ones, you know? So as long as we stay at that numbers, I don't feel it's a safe situation for them or us.
Is there a way to, to possibly hire them as part-time?
They are part-time.
Well, I mean, more of a, like a floater type of a, and have less of them? Because I realize, I realize you have to have a pool, but yet the pool is so large that you.
The 29-hour of Obamacare really put us into a bind, um, as far as, as that part of it. As far as if we get very many more hours, we're going to begin to pension issues. So we, so we're losing our savings. So it's, it's really complicated. It did work at six and one. But you have to be, you have to.
You're talking about the ratio between full-time, experienced?
Yeah. It really worked at that, but it, it can't go no lower than that. Five and one, I wouldn't, I don't feel good putting them in stations with these guys. And we've asked, we're constantly asked, well, why can't they, they drive the trucks. Why can't they run the shotgun seat? The shotgun seats, the officer, the officer's making all the calls and routes to the fire as far as the colors of the smoke. There's so many things that go into fighting fire that, that they have to see and they have to make decisions on how we're going to attack it. So we're wasting, you know, very little time. I feel that it is safer without them below seven men. Any other questions? We'll get through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Channel three, pausey, I forget where he told me he had to do it, right?
His son had a baby.
He's in Chicago? No, his daughter had a baby, that's it.
No, his son.
His son.
His son didn't have a baby.
There you go. I'm glad you called us.
Second to the last sheet in your, in the thing you've seen before. Everybody have seen this? Uh, this is a kind of a quick audit that Pam and Julie did, gave me on Tuesday. It tells the whole story right there. It's all there on one page. If we kept spending like we were, at the end of April, we would have $14,646.35 in bank. As you can see from tonight, that wouldn't have paid hardly anybody anytime. But we'd have been really well off in the park balance, we'd have $6,749. And in the, or in the streets, we'd have $9,000. We'll probably have to borrow some money to make it over, but we're going to make it. And by putting these things in place, I hope we can pay the money back. Last thing in fact tonight is, this congressional record was submitted by our congressman, Luke Messer. We worked over six months trying to make this manufacturing class started. We got it started and we graduated the first class in January. Two people from Congress were graduating in it. We've just started another class. It has been partially sponsored by Duke Energy. We have no money in it. I've got a lot of time in it, but we have no money in it. What these people get is a manufacturer's certificate. When they go to apply for a job, they can take that with them. It doesn't guarantee them a job, but it gets them in the door and gets our people to work. So Duke Energy's paying the fee to go to school. And the employer that employs the individual repays it so somebody else can go to school. It's kind of a rolling ball here. And it's working. We have 12 in the first class, but I don't know just how many in this class. We intend to have a class in Tarnsville, Richmond, and then we'd like to have two classes, one afternoon class and one evening class. It's very restrictive. You've got to be there on time, you've got to pass the test with the 90%. It's very, very restrictive. So that the employers know, when you go get this certificate, you are qualified to be a manufacturer employee. It teaches to be on time, it teaches how to dress, how to be safe, it teaches a lot of things. of things. You got something else, Julie?
Nope.
Anybody else got anything else? Public forum, last but not least, come on forth, Ruby.
Like you said, leave it for last, I don't have a question. I just asked that, would you put it on the bottom of the paper?
It's on the bottom of the paper.
You just put it on there, it's on the damn paper. Well, that's what I'm saying.
I tell you what you do, Ruby, you call and bark at the west end of the way.
No, I just know you think that, every time I asked that and she was changing, what's the big deal?
I don't know what.
I forgets to tell her.
Her dad passed away.
She wasn't here the last time and I remembered and told Diana, because Diana was getting those agendas together.
Well, usually the old business and this one is business, and every time somebody is very lax.
Why don't you call her and tell her just, why don't you call her and tell her just exactly how you want?
I'm not her boss. I asked you. You're her boss.
I can't remember till tomorrow morning, but Julie might have.
What day does she put the agendas together?
I know the deal, but, I mean, you always get there before.
Ruby, she's watching, she knows it.
I sure do.
She's watching. Anything else to come before this council tonight?
I'll move you there.
A motion and a second to journal, in favor, say aye. Any opposed?